Mayor Brunner will not be in attendance tonight due to a family emergency. In addition, Councilmember Johnson, he has a work compromise and is out of the state. It is now 6:10 PM and the City of Sunset Ballet meeting will come to order. Do we have some citizens of public communication?
I represent Three Pillar Road on April 1st. You know, there was a joke on the community once again. The neighbor had parked her vehicle out behind my driveway, which is just, you know, I got to stick to the script. I wrote this for a reason. On April 1st, there's no special use permit. And I'm sure there's a reason for the mayor stepping out tonight and Mr. Johnson. As one, you know, we got an issue with Sue Colby parking her vehicle out there and we got an issue of over 300 CAD numbers and calls to the Travis County Sheriff's Office for help concerning the neighbor, Sue Colby. Okay, so all the while I've asked you to help me with a free library placed there by Lynn Carter in the no parking zone, which has become the systemic issue of this community. Well, we have Rob Johnson, the council member with a pop-up slide trailer, but he was also hosting a party, which I'm not really into the next road over. But when you're on council and you have a job and you swear an oath to represent me and you have a special interest of your own, that's not taking care of my own interest. And that was your two vehicles parked in a restricted area as well, Mr. Johnson, it's a shame on you. This goes all the way back to Cheetah Fest when Mark Brunner followed Pro Tem Ketan Karud, who stepped down because he was parked in a no parking zone. We were just about to get it on the agenda, maybe years of discussion, but Brunner was also there. I've got photos of that. So I've asked to grieve Lynn Carter, who's standing behind me tonight. He's a good chief of police compared to, you know, Chief Niffen or even Sean Ford. But this is business. So I want to file a grievance on your chief of police for the reason that you're not doing your job, that he's being put under some kind of strain that he can't do his job. 300 calls for help, that's unacceptable. There's a reason that I'm bringing this up tonight. I hope you'll give me just a little bit longer tonight because I'm stuttering. I'm so nervous and tense, but I told myself to leave the anger at home. Okay, so the nepotism, that's in the city too. You have husband and wife working in different angles and a pig in a pen and a zoning law that says you can't have that pig in a pen. And an igloo, which is also a structure. So how can all this structure issue become such a problem that I can't get any justice, man? Wow. So a formal complaint, I want to know how to do that. You can't answer me. I know the city secretary can and Ms. Carrillo can. So you remember I removed Clay Collins, his assistant Sarah Wilson. I did this. Pro Tem mayor stepped down, buddy. I got rid of Scanlon, Buckland, Young, the city attorneys because they weren't near as prepared or as wonderful as this lady here is because I can tell she's from small town rural community and she knows what she's talking about. Wow. I have a lot more I'm prepared tonight, but I got, I can't put it in my pocket and just talk to you off cuff, man. It's been so wrong, what you do here. I told him I have PTSD, they come over there, they use their discretion, do nothing. He came out of the house, the young boy that violated, they're yelling and screaming at me and he's, a young boy has no right to engage a conversation with an adult. He's trying to park illegally in a no parking zone. So please, before I come back and ask you to remove the pig, I'll get 50 of my own. Moment of silence, man. For 22 veterans that end their lives and I've been wanting and pursuing the path of trying to find them to heal and give them something and it costs me every time I get around them. I mean, I don't want to be around them, these people. You're the government, you take care of them, man. These people, you know, they're ain't up, man. They're, you know, yes, sir. Thank you, Matt. God bless America.
Yeah, thank you for your comments.
You will be working for me.
Yeah. Mayor Pro Tem? Oh, sorry. Just wanted to mention there are two open gov comments tonight. And I just wanted to let the council know they were posted while we were in the work session and they're actually related to the work session. So just as a reminder to residents, the work session agenda is not actionable items. There was direction to bring back items discussed at the work session on the April 19th council agenda. So there are two open gov comments. I'm not going to read them because again, they're not related to tonight's council agenda, but they are related to agenda items that will be coming forward. So just wanted council to be aware so you all can read them. And then residents, if they're interested in these topics can make comments or come to the meeting for April 19th. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have more comments, please?
Melissa Gonzalez, 26, Reese. I just want to reiterate a request that these work sessions are televised because I think people have a lot of interest in them and I think it's important for transparency. The other thing I want to say is having sat through it, I think there's a lot of significant information that was left out of them. I think that they suffered from not being run through committee. I think that when I've listened to both zoning and board of adjustment, they have had concerns about the incompleteness. And I think that their thoughts about what's incomplete and what's not in the process should be in our process about how we fix that problem. And I don't feel like they had that opportunity and I think that's really important. I also think that the extra expense that I understand we would incur and citizens would incur by making the switch from board of adjustments as the final to district court with, well, the final city part to district court as the court of appeal would be excessive. And that, and for the city too, because we're going to have to hire attorneys as we go forward. And so I don't think those kinds of things were brought up. Those are part of the things that I heard from my discussion about this with others. I think that district court is certainly not going to have the interests and the motivations and the background of what city council would have about what our community would want. So for them to be a final court of appeal strikes me as a good way to win our city personally. And I've heard other people have that comments as well. So I think that, but particularly the cost analysis and the lack of training for evidentiary hearings of the board of adjustment members, I think those are very important things. And none of those things were brought up in what would allegedly be a neutral staff presentation. And so I think that at least, I've sat in more meetings than I think most people in this city and I would not be able to have the skillset to go sit on BOA, you know. So we have some people with real specific talents that serve this city and we need to be able to use their information to help move us forward, especially in the areas that impact them. So I really would request that we do do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. And now, yes, one, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, member Rosengarden.
I did it when you were looking down. I just wanted to mention kudos to our Miki Powers. She got recognized by KXAN this week for all that she does for incarcerated and for those in need and for animals. So thank you, Miki.
Excellent, excellent for Miki. Yep, excellent for Miki with all the community. Okay, now we are in number three and this is the staff reports. We will move on that staff report. Sylvia, will you please begin the staff reports? And you can introduce your directors.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem and council. Part of the report that's due at the beginning of every month is the professional service fees. That is included in your report as attachment A. We also have Laserfish, the document management system that council approved at the prior council meeting and staff training for that begins on 4/7. That was part of the discussion in the prior workshop about all of those documents that still need conversion as well as the documents we still need to pull off of the old website and convert and bring over. Internally, we have started FY23 budget preparation, reviewing department staffing needs as well as operational capital and equipment repair and replacement budget. So we're very, very deep into some of those discussions and plan to bring that information forward both to council and the budget and finance committee in the latter part of this month. Matt continues to work on the RFP for IT services. We need to get that out. There is a marketing and branding update that is also as attachment B that's included. Canales and Company provides a weekly report and I've consolidated that information. CED meets tomorrow. They are going to begin looking at opportunities for beautification projects. We are going to be discussing city hall as a community center and have the building plans for which to have that discussion and also spring fling, the volunteer appreciation and other events. I believe spring fling slash volunteer appreciation, I believe May 8th?
May 15th.
May 15th?
Week after Mother's Day.
Week after Mother's Day. And we're trying to find an alternate date in case there's a rain. So we are coordinating with docks to have that at docks and then also perhaps crumble as a dessert type, goody bag type thing. Board of Adjustment meets on the 13th. We are working through a variance request at 1052 Sunflower and then also picking up the 6455 Brody landscaping buffer. And just as an aside, the board of adjustment appeal to district court, that's in the local government code. That's not a new thing. It always appeals to district court. That's why it is so important that it is prepared as a court case. That's not new. Zoning Commission on the 27th will pick up city-owned properties zoning changes. I believe 37 Lone Oak is on this list as well. 6107 and 6401 Brody. The proposal is from single-family residential to parkland. We will also pick up the short-term rental regulations. I think commission made a yeoman's effort at the last meeting and I think we're almost there. We're at the point of finalizing and we have to advertise because it is in the zoning chapter. And then Carolyn has pre-meetings tomorrow, pre-submittal meetings tomorrow for the LDC amendment. So I'm hopeful that folks actually show up and submit to help us get that land development code going. And then I am charged to bring back those proposed amendments to that development process. So, and last but not least, we do have Art Fest on April 30th. If you have not volunteered, please do so. Yes, they are in desperate need of more volunteers. So I am happy to entertain any questions.
Josie?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for this report, Sylvia. Since this is the first time we're seeing this particular professional services fees attachment report thing, would you mind walking us through it just so that we can glean the most out of it that we can?
So we have engineer, attorney, IT management service, engineer review and inspection, and then a little known item called legal defense fund. So the engineer design fees, that is dollars that are carried over. We had Lone Oak and Sunset Trail last year be funded. They didn't reach construction. They were kind of still in planning stage. So when we created the CIP budget, we rolled that over into, and that's the encumbrance that you see there. The attorney fees, we went through a budget amendment the other day. We had some issues with invoices, I believe we're all squared away. That is that amount that you will see there. IT management, yep. We continue to have, I don't want to say issues, but we did go to a consolidated annual contract, but we have found that everything is still out of contract. Everything is still a special project. So it's, you know, it's irrelevant. That's one of the reasons why that IT RFP is so important. And we used to have a little item called legal defense funds. Not really funded anymore, but this would be where if we had big ticket items, normally our things are helped along with TML. So I don't know what this line item was specifically. So I give you a breakout on what those engineering fees were, that encumbrance of 386, 610 of what's still there. And then I also show you the CIP summary where that 190, 128 and should have been 82,000, but we had some dollars charged out of it, where that money actually comes from. And then I give you an actual breakout of engineering cost per project. And so we shouldn't have any, any design fees that are in administration. They should all be within a project. So what you see here should be allocated to a project and you will see the fund, the department and the code and the transaction description. And this is the first time you're actually also seeing a permit issued report. That's a benefit of the My Permit Now system. We can give you anything and everything at the drop of a hat of what's going on. I'm sorry, I skipped over attachment B, the Canales and Company update. So happy to dive into any one of those questions.
Is the, is there a way for us to find out, and I could probably just ask accounting out of hand, but the AP for 25,000 to Freeman Turk on the last page of the, I don't know how to, I guess, document number 1437?
That is Funding Source 30, 50, 57, 58. So let's see what that is. So it's an expense. So it is Fund 30. It's a CIP project. And what's the next string?
50.
50?
Yeah, 50 and later 57, 58, the account.
I was charged to repairs and maintenance system from a water utility infrastructure for a CIP project. Carolyn, do you have any more information on that? Let me go to the transaction.
It says the $25,000 for AP, so the account's payable 318, 2022, right?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, there's, now it's broken out twice.
So 12,500. I'll have to get, I'll get more detailed description. There's not a lot of detail.
They split that, looks like, and they split, they are 12,500 and 12,500.
It's two, it's two charges from the capital for a water infrastructure project. I'm not sure what exactly that is, but I can get more detailed information.
I need permission to use my calculator.
Yeah, but only one time.
Only one time?
Yeah, I am watching. Okay. I have one question. It's very simple. You mentioned the in Brody, we have two lots, and they tried to do that from residential to park ground. In reality, they will be park grounds in Brody?
Yes, so the...
How they will park?
No, no, not parking, park land, park land.
A park, a park, okay.
Yes, yes.
But the people...
Green space park.
Okay. Then I try to say this. We have only one park at this moment, and that is in Greece. So these places will be similar to the park that we have in Greece?
No, there's, there's a reason for that. So in, in our code, there is a conservation space, and there's et cetera, et cetera. What I have heard from the community over the time I've been here is, we bought it with green tax money. We should leave it with green tax money. The only thing that protects a piece of property like that is a park dedication because that requires the community to agree to sell the asset. So you can rezone it conservation, you can rezone it similar, but it, it won't have the same protection. And Barbara, would you like to chime in to that?
The change of zoning to park for protection and referendum.
And I was just going to say that, so yeah, we have three distinctions in the, in the LDC. We have three zoning districts that would be considered, you know, parkland, greens. So we have P, parkland, G, green space, and C, conservation. And for P, parkland, which is what, you know, we're recommending to change these city-owned properties to, the land use is, the land use can be public parks, it can be conservation. So, so all of the, the, those uses in P, G, and C are allowed within parkland. But what Sylvia was referencing is that when it, once it's designated as parkland, it's more protected. So if it's, if it's designated as just a conservation space, the city can then later, you know, the city on its own can just sell, you know, elect to sell.
You say P as a parkland, G as a what?
Sorry, P, it's P, and this is all, P, sorry, I lost my place here. Oh, G for green space. So we have GUI, which is government utility, but then G is green space, and then there's C, conservation. But, but, but for parkland, if you look at the land uses within parkland, parkland covers all of the uses permitted in P, C, and G.
Yeah, for example, this land that we have in front of us, we call green, green space, this place. Now, if I will go, we will have one that we call conservation, another preservation. And later you have in the, the other side, close to the Garza's Ranch or something, how do they call that land, Caroline?
Convisionary?
Yeah, no, no, no. In the other side of Brody, close to...
Oh, Indian Craft Reserve?
Yes. So it's different, that?
I, I think the clarification is, in our code, we have three different zoning categories that we consider. We have parkland, we have green space preservation, and we have conservation. All of our green spaces have different zoning designations. So you're correct. The Indian Craft Prairie Preserve is zoned as conservation area. South Hills is conservation area. And the way we see that is that it has, those areas that are conservation areas has more restrictions. However, I believe, and Barbara can explain this, statewide as the code, park, enabling something as a park actually is the more restrictive.
Okay.
Do you want to hear the rest of the story?
Yeah, thank, thank you for that, okay?
Okay. So yes, when you, once you designate some, any piece of property as parkland, as a city, it really is protected. It gets buttoned down. You have to seek permission through an election to sell the property, once it's designated as parkland. So if you, you can use it under these other designations, and if you ever decided that you needed to sell it for some reason, you wouldn't necessarily have to seek permission from the voters before you could sell. And when you have parkland, it actually designated as parkland, you have to use it as parkland, or you have to seek permission from the voters to be able to sell it. Okay?
Thank you very much. Another question? So we can continue. Please, Sylvia.
So that's... That's what I have for the administration report.
So you will pass to?
Yes, so I will pass it to Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. Nice to see everybody tonight. I'm just going to report on a few things. So Public Works has been doing some leak repairs down on Lone Oak Trail. So you may see the guys out there, Duncan included. They worked really hard to make that happen and get those, that leak repaired in a timely manner over on Lone Oak Trail. We're working on, we've got a lot of things moving ahead. We're working on getting the training scheduled to initiate AMI. You'll see the generator kind of come before Council, hopefully at the next council meeting. So you'll be seeing a lot of things coming up in the next few meetings. Everything is on the CIP webpages. If you have any questions on that, I'd be glad to give you any kind of information on any of the projects right there. As Sylvia mentioned, we do have the Parks and Open Space pre-bid submittal tomorrow. So we're hoping that we get some people showing up for that to kind of get some information. I mean, sorry, land development code, not parks. We're already doing that. Parks and Open Space, the committee is meeting for the first time next week. So all of these things are kind of moving ahead. We're doing a lot with getting ready for the Adventure Bill. American Youth Works should be on site to start working on the Valley Creek Park Trail starting next week. I met with them today and kind of walked through that area and kind of gave them a slight overview of what we're planning, what we need to happen in that to make that happen. Also visited Violet Crown Trail site to see where, what that status of that project is. And so they're moving along on that. And as I said, if there's any questions anybody has, I'd be happy to answer.
I did want to add one thing, one thing Carolyn left off.
Yes.
Dakota.
Yes.
So Dakota Burns, he's, he's not here, is he?
He's not here, no.
Our new superintendent, super, super, super go-getter. He's a great asset to the team. And she downplays AMI, the training schedule for AMI. That's automated metering, right, the reading. So that has the potential to reap great efficiency benefits if we can get that project to completion. So she's a little bit shy on that one. That one's like, man, if we can get that home run this year, we're, we're doing good.
Yes. Member Rosengarten?
I just wanted to comment, if I haven't done it already, that I really, really enjoy going into the Public Works report, seeing the CIP list, clicking on CIP, following through to the projects, following it through to every document linked from Council, to show that we supported that project and that we voted on it, and then continuing to the task board, and then clicking down and finding the full budgetary status of all CIP projects. Way to go.
Thank you.
That is fantastic. Thank you.
Well, I have one, one question, Caroline. In what, you say leak investigation. What means that?
Yeah, there was a leak on Lone Oak. We've already repaired it.
I'm sorry?
There was a leak on Lone Oak Trail. We were kind of checking it out and doing some preliminary stuff, and then we isolated that leak and repaired it yesterday. And they were working on reattaching. It's a house that's under some remodel construction, so they were working on reattaching the service line earlier, earlier today. So hopefully over this next few days, it'll all be kind of cleaned up and done.
So it was a main line, or was a...
It was a, it was a stubout to the service line.
For the house service line?
For the house service line, yeah.
Okay. And was for a long time, or was a few days?
We don't know how long it was going on. But we noticed some water in the ditch that kind of remained there before, with some rain. Actually, we had a resident pointed out at the Public Planning and Environmental Committee was like, hey, there's some water. And so we started investigating, trying to find that area and worked through some of that.
There used to be a springs, but now they found that was a leak. So now, that is true.
So yeah, we started to work on that.
Thank you. So, okay, Sylvia, we can continue?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. I'll start with the RFP for facilities security. We are currently in the walkthrough process for vendors for that. They have to present a, come and do a walkthrough before they present their bid. They have until the 21st to do that. So far, six have already scheduled to come do it. We had two today come through. So we're moving along by that. By the 21st, they have to be done. So, and the whole, I believe the project was late March before we expect to award the, late May before we're going to award the contract. So we're moving right along with that one. I heard Council member Rosengarten, I will get with Carolyn and learn to link those as well, so that y'all can just look at that yourselves. We are, we have two dates in May for the westbound 290 cleanup. If you've seen the eastbound along the 290 Service Road, it still looks pretty good. There's, on any given day, there's a lot of trash that blows through. But we're going to start the other side for two weeks ends in, or two weeks, two days in May with Public Works. I have really good news to report as well. We, the 100 Club of Central Texas has chosen Sunset Valley PDE as the outstanding law enforcement team in Central Texas for last year. The SOS, or the 100 Club is like a regional group that supports law enforcement. They, they have them throughout Texas and the country. This one covers, I know, Williamson County, Travis, and Hayes. So our little PDE, out of all those, was chosen as the outstanding team. We're going to be honored at their luncheon on May 5. So, and it's kind of a fancy little luncheon the guys will really enjoy.
Where, where will the luncheon be?
It's at the library downtown in one of the conference rooms, yeah.
And tickets?
Yeah, I'll send you the information. Yeah, you can. You can. Also, they're going to do a documentary on our department. They were filming last week, and then tomorrow about 1, they're coming back to film some shots of us interacting with residents and businesses. So if we see you on the street, you may be on TV tomorrow.
Congratulations, chief. And do you have something more? Yes, Caroline?
I also just wanted to add that we're going to have Household Housing Waste pickup next Tuesday on my, for curbside. If people want to put their stuff out, they can do that.
Thank you. Now we came to number four, Council consideration of the agenda items for approval on consent. In that case, we have items five, six, and seven that may be considered an act of consent. They used to have, member Rosengarten, please?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I move to approve on consent, Agenda Item Number Five, Work Session and Council Meeting Minutes of 3:22, 2022. Agenda Item Number Six, canceling council meeting for July 5. Agenda Item Number Seven, appointing Barbara Wilson to Arts in Alternative to Board of Adjustments.
Okay. So now, after, yeah, yes.
I will second that. Or do we second that?
Yeah, she made, she made the motion, right? And you second the motion. Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, so we have in favor, and they passed. Yeah, yeah, I will, I, I vote, say, yes, you can have 4-0. Yeah, thank you for reminding me. Sometimes I believe that I, I am now. This is so difficult. It's okay. Now, do we need to repeat the number five? Consider an act? No, because now we approve, and she made it. Thank you very much, member. Now, we will go with the presentation for items for discussion only and no action. We have 15 minutes. I don't know if, at what time do you want to close, and we will go to executive session. I think then...
8 o'clock.
We will keep going with this, and we will see. Okay, so in that case, so Council member Ridgefield, so you, you have there, that number eight, presentation, discussion, and possible staff direction on the comprehensive plan updates as recommended by the Planning and Environmental Committee.
Yes, thank you. And I believe Carolyn had prepared the actual presentation here.
So yes, thank you. So the Planning and Environmental Committee has been working diligently over the past year, maybe even longer than that, on reviewing and revising the comprehensive plan. They, you know, the Planning and Environmental Committee has a long history of doing a lot of plans and reviews and kind of working on those things. So they've finished their part of what they see as the comprehensive plan, and they're ready, they want to, you know, put it out to the general public and let the general public and everybody kind of have their moment to be able to provide feedback and direction and ideas, and to have some public meetings on the item. So this is kind of kicking off that process. So for those who don't know, the comprehensive plan is kind of like a guiding document for the city for how it, you know, how, it will affect how the land development code develops. It will affect everything. It's kind of like the umbrella that covers all of the other documents in the city, basically. And so it has a lot of impact. And so we want to make sure that, you know, we get it really far along in the process before the LDC review really starts, so that everything kind of falls in line together. And so they wanted to first, they kind of put together some recommendations. And there's also a kind of process that has to follow in the local government code as well for the comprehensive plan. So we've added those steps in there, too. So we're looking at April 5. We're going to do our presentation here to Council. So we've added those steps in there, too. So we're looking at April 5th. We're going to do our presentation here to council. And you can click on the links and kind of follow through and go to the draft comprehensive plan. Basically, we'll start putting up a news story and go live. We've had a public input process up for a while, but we're really going to kind of push that and get more feedback if council is agreeable. Trying to do a town hall meeting on April 25th. May 17th would be a city council public hearing, so that's one of those processes to have a public hearing. May 25th would be a zoning presentation. That's a process that it has to go through. We're going to have Public Works Open House on May 21st, so that's also an, an opportunity for kind of more, especially for those folks who don't use the internet really, that want the paper kind of feedback, want to talk about things in person. That will be an opportunity to kind of get that type of feedback as well. Planning and Environmental knows that after that, we'll have, they'll have a chance to kind of finalize and craft everything before it comes to city council later in June for an adoption. So that is kind of the schedule they've looked at, trying to get as much public feedback and interaction as we can over the next couple of months, so that we can have something to present to council later in June. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to read it. I know the link was not quite working, so they may not have been able to go through it, but that's a future land use map. Well, I always laugh because it's called the current future land use map. So it's, but that's a topic of discussion, is looking at the land use and making sure it still aligns with what the vision of the city is. That is kind of the draft right now of all the, you know, different parts of the comprehensive plan. And I think the committee really did a good job of fleshing out a lot of really, you know, interesting stuff that we may not have considered, you know, back in 20, well, that would have been 2009, 2010, that when they were starting to work on it then. So this is a, you know, it's, it's a lot of progress that's been made, and I think this is just a way to keep it moving forward.
Yes.
Well, first of all, this is a huge project, and congratulations to all the committee members. Wow, that's amazing, you know, and very well-written document, and I'm so impressed. A couple of questions. Is, is it okay if I ask questions about some details in it? Is, one is the low density. What is meant by low density? And what does that mean for future development? Kind of thoughts?
Low density, let me go to that portion of the page real quick. It was literally looking at that, you know, the single-family residential areas, and keeping those, you know, that it's not, it's not multifamily. The lots are still going to be similar, the, the way the lots are now, to try to keep the larger lots and not sub, not a huge amount of subdivision. One of the things we did discuss, though, as part of this, was the concept of a conservation subdivision, and looking at the Land Development Code for something of that nature, which technically creates larger, smaller lots, but at the same time preserves more open space. So there, there's some, you know, looking at some things like that, where it may, it has the same density, you know, but the lot sizes shift a little bit in that. So there was a discussion that they had on that. Let me get down there. And it's, like I said, it is right here, looking at those single-family areas to keep them looking like what Sunset Valley looks now, is what they were talking about at that point.
Yep. So I kind of, and kind of getting a futuristic hat on, I guess, if I look at our shopping centers, and at some point, I think there'll be some sort of redevelopment. And I think the way to make it feasible for those shopping centers financially is to have, you know, some sort of condo base with that.
Like mixed-use?
Yeah. And so, yeah, mixed-use type of development. And so does this basically, are we saying, no, we're not going to do that, we can't do that? Is, I mean, how binding is this, and what does this mean? I guess. And so, did y'all discuss that at all? Yeah.
I would say, yes, it was discussed. There was, I think there was a little bit of a split with the committee on that topic. I think that is something that definitely needs to be discussed with the larger community.
Yeah.
So I think there is, there was a discussion that was held, but I think it's something that needs to be put out and let the community at large also review that.
And then the, I also saw the adoption of Atlas 14. And what all will that entail?
Right now, we're actually got a proposal we're going to be showing to Public Works Committee in the next, it should be at the next meeting, I think, to look at, have the engineers review and show us what that will entail and what the consequences of that are. Not only on the residential, but the, the commercial, as well as if there are any infrastructure consequences that the city would have. So that may be something we need to kind of look at in there and kind of evaluate how we say that language, and maybe it needs to be more exploring Atlas 14 than adopting Atlas 14.
I, I think so. I wouldn't put that as, as our goal, because there's a lot of, from what I know of it, it's a lot of implications. And they're not all positive for some of our residents.
Yeah, so that, that's something that probably needs to be.
Okay.
A bigger, bigger thought.
Yeah, those were my two big concerns, I guess.
So the document is our constitution, so to speak, and it should be broad enough that it is able, the other documents that fall below it are the ones that become more detailed. The code still allows for planned unit developments. The code still allows for tools that would increase densities so long as infrastructure can match. That's transportation, water, sewer, those kinds of things. So it doesn't necessarily negate it completely. There's just a different path that those kind of projects would have to come through.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just wanted to say, all of council appreciates all the work that PNE did. And that was one of the benefits of going virtual and having more than one council member in a meeting, is I've seen it like three times now. You did a great job on doing timeline recommendations. I've always been told, don't bring a problem without a solution. You said, hey, we need to do a timeline, we need to present it, and so, so many dates and so many times, and you took care of it for us. Basically said, does, does this look good for you? Yes. Thank you.
Okay. If there is anyone from the public that they want to speak?
Melissa Gonzalez, 26. I, I would characterize, well, first I want to start by complimenting Carolyn, because she was extraordinary. And I, and I really think that everybody needs to know, if they weren't in those meetings, how extraordinary she was. She, she keeps the heart and the soul of, of the city in her heart, and she, and she creates documents that reflect that, that reflected what we said. I would say there was a stronger comment from the committee about keeping things not mixed-used. I will say that that was my impression, but we can go back and look at that. But apart from that, she, she would take everything we said and turn it into words. And it was just a work of art. And we owe the, a great debt of gratitude to her for creating such a beautiful, living document that reflected what the committee did. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Is there a motion?
There's, there's no action.
No action?
Just, so the steps.
Moving forward.
Let's go through all this. What, what, go through the steps again?
So, so there's going to be, so, so as of tomorrow, right, Carolyn, there'll be a new open town hall opening, or a new, a new story?
We're going to just publicize that and push the existing, because we've already got, strangely enough, somebody already commented before this. And so we're going to keep that, and we're just put that link out there so they can continue commenting on it. And we will allow, we'll just put a new story up on the website. We'll send out eye contacts to, and information directly to all the committees and to all the committee members and, like, zoning commission and everybody, so that we can start getting that feedback from them.
Yes. And then there will be, so the, the plan is for a town hall meeting, April 25th. As then the, required by the local government code is that we hold a public hearing, which, you know, already there will have been, you know, opportunities for the public to comment, but the official city council public hearing will be at, excuse me, be on May 17th. And then May 25th will be the official zoning commission. Zoning commission will have their opportunity to weigh in. And then the, the plan is then, after all of those comments, after PNE has their final review of everyone's comments and input, council can possibly adopt the comp plan, the revised comp plan on June 21st, the second council meeting in June.
Wow.
Okay. More comments? Yes.
This is not related to this agenda item, but I just wanted to quickly add or ask, how is the new website with getting projects done now, with, with presenting, like, how detailed you were on presenting? Is this new website allowing you more functionality than the previous website?
Oh, like a hundred times more functionality than the previous website.
Money well spent, then. That's what I needed to hear.
It is great. It is so easy to post agendas. It is so, now, you know, I know we have work to do of all the old stuff, but it is so much easier.
That's what I needed to hear.
So much more functionality, so many more opportunities. Yes. Great.
Comments? Okay. So we can go now to number nine. Presentation, Discussion, and Possible Staff Direction on Parking Signage for the Trailheads at the Meadows and on Oakdale Drive. So Councilmember Rosengarden, you want to?
I'm going to allow the chief to comment on what our signs are doing on Lone Oak right now.
Okay. So there are, I think there's two signs on Lone Oak. If you'll remember, the residents complained about people using that as a trailhead. The compromise was to put these suggestive signs that basically tell people parking is for this trailhead, or for the trailhead is here at City Hall. For the most part, people see the signs and leave. If they don't, and someone calls us or we see them, we will go if they're out there, if they're not deep into the trail, and just remind them ourselves. Really, very few people have not cooperated with that. There are one or two that routinely go anyway, even though now we've already talked to them. Some people, when they see the sign, they just quickly see the sign, I mean, read it and think the sign says, this is the trailhead parking, and they're following instructions. So, but I would say less people are parking there and staying. But there's pretty consistent traffic there, especially on weekends, of people who pop in, and of those, they're in the trail and we don't get a chance to go contact them. We are still waiting for these little, that, these little note cards that look like tickets that we will put on there to remind people on their windshield that the trailhead is over here. But it's, I, I would say overall, there's less people, but those that are unhappy about it are probably still unhappy about people parking there.
So I was presented, I was presented from residents in the Meadows complaining about parking along our entryway. They're breaking our sprinkler heads once again. This has been going on for a long time. It's nothing new. And each time that I bring up the idea of putting signage on the entryway, usually there's a majority that say, no, they don't want more signage. They want to enjoy the beauty of the, of the entry. But I've had a resident who has come back and said, you know, maybe it's time, we need some signage. On Oakdale, same thing. I had a resident approach me and say, something needs to be done. They're parking at the end of Oakdale. It's dangerous. You can't get out of the, out of the, your residence, et cetera. So are we, as a council, ready to put no parking signs up? First, having an open town hall meeting with the residents to see if they're ready? Or do we want to do what we did on Lone Oak and try that first?
Yeah. Yes. You asked that to?
To council.
To the council. Yes, Member Ridge?
Well, maybe the sign can be stronger. No trailhead parking. And, and then you could say parking at City Hall, you know. So it's pretty, you know, and the only people that would be actually parking there should be like visitors to those homes and such. Now, I, I will tell you, I have a little bit of a conflict of entrance, of, of interest in the Meadows, because my house is the very first house. And so if there's no parking, they're all going to park in front of my house. And so I have a problem with that. And I worked really hard that that wouldn't happen to the Lone Oak people at the end. And so I don't think that's the right suggestion. So.
Could we have it where we say parking available at World Market? Would we have to get into a partnership with World Market in order to allow that? Because we don't want them to just make it the next residents' problem and so on.
So that, that's a good potential solution, entering into a, a shared parking agreement. Two things would have to happen. One, the council would have to give itself a relief of the parking standards, because the shopping center won't meet the parking standards anymore. But you can give yourself relief. That's, you know, that's, that's, that's an easy one. But that's an administrative checkbox we have to do. But yes, we can certainly entertain a, a shared parking agreement with the shopping center to see what, you know, what the thought is there.
Usually that side parking area next to World Market doesn't have but one or two cars there when I walk through. So I thought, well, that's a perfect opportunity.
It just, it just makes me think at the retreat, you know, one of the goals, I believe, was, I forgot how we ended up wording it. I don't think we necessarily finished, but, was to try to increase the walkability of the shopping center, right? So if there's some sort of agreement we could reach with, say, the village, you know, to help better, you know, hey, this is where you park, and, you know, we make it easier to get to the village from the trails. That then increases, you know, that interconnects the trails with, with the shopping center.
And with more people buying electric cars, they're parking there to charge their car?
Charge your Tesla while you go walk.
That's right.
Crystal Mountain, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and just because my, like, our feedback, I guess, was solicited here. To me, putting no parking signs or codifying a no parking situation would be a very extreme measure. Like, street parking in these sorts of situations is kind of a given. Like, it's a cost of the type of road that we build, that there's going to be people parked on the lawns, and it's just kind of, I don't, I don't know. So like, taking away from the public good is something that would be really hard for me to do. I'm super supportive of these kind of like public-private partnerships where we can go in to the shopping center and we'll, and we'll pitch in and we'll develop it and make it pretty, and we can, you know, make it then very incentive to improve all that. Like, absolutely spot on. But like, I think a lot of this kind of codified to no parking is, would be really hard for me.
Yes. I, I think that months ago, we were looking about the surveys for the streets. And I think then we came to one idea that, that the chief, if I remember, Sylvia, you told me that the chief, he would start making some meetings with different people from the neighborhoods. So in that way, I think would be good to discuss that point, when, when you say, I am the first house. And the people, they are so, so close for the trail, then they would be parking in that place or in the small dump that they have there. So, but what happened if you are talking with six or seven neighbors? And they will, that neighbors, they would say, okay, maybe you're right. We need to find another solution. So at this moment, Member Rosengarden, she mentioned about the world, that, that store that you have in that corner, only the, the employees, they park in that place. And they don't have so many employees, so you have so many spaces. So that came, but I think then, perhaps, again, because we made that surveys, is the bad idea to go back again to that community and listen to people. So because we would be surprised, when I was, I was thinking in bumpers, bumps, I'm sorry, bumps on the street. Some people say, no, we don't want bumps. And, and you are surprised, because all of a sudden they told me, yes. So now, it would be hard to have one decision, but if we start with that discussion, and you have the authority and the staff, perhaps we will come to some conclusions, because this is what we need. And I, I don't. And I don't... I think that would be important, Sylvia, perhaps, if we schedule that. And in that way, nobody will be outside of the game. This is open and they have the opportunity, first, for the survey. What we were doing with the survey, now we come back to the people and we try to produce some actions. So this is how also I was looking that.
So chief, I think you said your next public safety?
Yes, that the next public safety meeting will provide the opportunity for individual, the subdivisions, if they want that on the public safety agenda. You know, citywide, it's not popular, it's never going to be popular. I can think of one subdivision where maybe, maybe over in the Villas, they might as a group want some sort of stricter parking regulations. You're not gonna get it anywhere else in the city. But we can, we will certainly open up that opportunity, maybe there's some, you know...
Please do that. Put that on your agenda, because Oakdale, I can't think of a solution there. It's all residential. Thank you.
Member Ritz?
So when you talk with residents, were there a huge amount of residents that complained? Because I'm the first house, I have not complained, so.
Totally agree. I had one resident from Oakdale and I had a resident who has brought it up before from the Meadows on Lovegrass and who represents us in our HOA.
Okay. So please try to put that in your agenda and in that way, we can fix that. If we don't have more in that area, we will try to, okay, I'm sorry, Sylvia.
No, no, that's okay, but it does beg the broader discussion of what you raised earlier. If this, if we're making this a park, where does parking happen? And so it's the Manley Track, right, that's right there off of Oakdale?
Well, there's two. There's the Manley Track, which is three or three houses down, and then there's one at the very, very end that you can walk in. What's it called?
Nance.
Nance, the Nance Track?
Nance Track, yes, the Nance Track. That's where the resident who complained lives.
So, but as we talk about park and we talk about parkland...
Yes.
That's a critical conversation to have and I really am firmly of the belief, now that legal has said we don't need accessible parking at the trails themselves, at the trailheads themselves, that parking should be here or it should be within one of our shared spaces. And that's really more for an issue of safety. We have dark sky in our neighborhoods and the last thing I want is a pedestrian to get run over when they're coming in and out. I know the Drakers also talked to me about as they're pulling out and folks are parked and you gotta make a really wide turn right there on Oakdale. So that's just something for council to consider as we go through park.
Good, yes.
And then also, of course, with that new development coming on, Brody, that might offer a much more enticing parking situation for folks than on Oakdale. And there might be some ways that we can be creative about spicing that up as well, so hopefully we can get a lot of these. Yeah, absolutely.
So, member Rosen Garden, what means that?
Walking trail.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
Sylvia, no more in that area? So maybe now we can go to executive session? And we have some items with possible action, but that will be in open session. The topic would be the accounting, finance and human resources staffing needs. So, you will go there? So, do you have a motion?
So moved to move into executive session.
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay. Everybody, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? No, so four zero, including myself.
Now, after executive session, we reconvene and we will have the discussion. And at this moment will be mainly the... Well, I am looking for a motion but from the discussion that we had previously. So, do you have a motion? Can we have a motion? Yes?
Thank you Mayor Protem. I accept the resignation of Susana Flego with follow-up and with the city administrator, with direction given by council to the city administrator. Thank you.
Somebody second that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. All of them are in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None. So the motion is four zero and it pass.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Do we need a motion for adjourn? Yes?
Yes.
Please, please Justin?
Yes, a motion to adjourn.
Second motion?
I will second.
Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Everybody have a good night. Thank you. Everybody have a good night and thank you. So we made it.